Welcome everybody here. It's been a long time. It's been a long time. I don't feel they're all here to hear this. But welcome everybody, it is good to see everybody here. We do have a forum for substantial for our prayer. Hope we place your wisdom and apply your teachings to our daily life. Help us to discern your will in every situation and to make choices that honor you and bless others. Grant us the strength, the strength to resist divotation and the courage and firm our conviction. May our lives be a reflection of your wisdom and great worth. Amen. Item number six, and that is to acknowledge and accept the vote submitted for the T H C A contract number one zero zero three five seven eight. This is the home grant reconstruction class assistance of three hope within Farm County. We have the two bids here. This is a program that we've been doing for even a four lifetime here. But it is a one or typically we use five that's here. No, your here will be. First one is going to be from Oregon Poly Construction LLC, Ohio, Texas. This is already clear with one fourteen five. And this one is from James Dennis Turner Construction, Farm Ball. Okay, and item number seven is discuss approve disapprove contract ceremony signing for Farm County and B T X community to acknowledge successful effort that paid for a critical infrastructure investment we don't think any warning that they booth two grand, owing fifty-one million seventy-three thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars. To be enhanced, brought in to be in Farm County. Give you all a little history on this. Mr. Dupick and myself, still need work with these last four years. This is something that we talked about, plan, tried to, I have a dream, Farm County, possibly three years ago. Cam, you go with connected. Six years ago, in that book, Cam came and gave the presentation on connectivity that we had in Farm and it was not accurate. Cam moved around a couple of places a couple of years ago, helping I reached out to her and it's something that counties, county needs to spend a million dollar and build our own power. And says, honestly, that's the problem. And she moved to another company. Can you not hear me? Is that better? She moved to another company and called me one day. Sophie was already sick and been hospitalized for a long time. She said, Judge, time is of the essence. We've got an opportunity that has come up and I think it will be beneficial to the county. And she brought her team, these folks in here, sitting back there at B T X, he's calling. Brought the team together and presented it to Ford. I said, hey, you know, this is something that could be good. We need a letter of recommendation. Refined to ten jurors and state reps. Our county was said awarded almost fifty-two million dollars. And so I was super excited about it. This is just kind of the ceremony, just an announcement. I've met with Mayor's office and brought it to the city. So I know that there's, there's, so my concern, but this is a big infrastructures that are in the cities. Gas lines, there's going to be a lot of planning that will go into this. So I plan on the next two weeks to a month, we're going to sit down, each one of the mayors and sit down with the city managers, wherever you want to sit down, we can sit down in all city to make sure that we don't have problems that are happening in some of our community. Okay, who wants to come and speak about this? Anybody?
My name is Patrick McDonald. I'm the CEO of B T X One. At B T X, we've been serving our community since nineteen fifty-two, initially providing phone services as Valley Telephone Cooperative. Fast forward to today, B T X One is providing high-speed internet services to those areas where others have refused to go. As we like to say, we're big enough to do what the big guys can do, but small enough to do the things that they won't. Producing the digital vibe in Karnes County provides many people with new access. Providing access to high-speed internet can equalizer and enable our community. B T X One is committed to serving South Texas. As I said, we've been around since nineteen fifty-two. We're not going. We're extremely excited today to do another event here, announcing the project. I'd like to thank Judge Hipkey for the opportunity to work with Karnes County. I'd also like to thank a couple of our board members who have been very supportive of me and our company's efforts in doing this. We've got Kelly Hill Real, our past board president and treasurer. John Barnes, our board vice president, and our current board president, Dr. Alberto Barza. As the judge mentioned, the state of Texas awarded B T X One a fifty-one million dollar grant to provide internet service to over five thousand unserved county residents. As part of that project, we'll be building over five hundred miles of fiber to provide those services. I think the important thing is, you know, I heard how many years you've been waiting for this. The good news is, we have to be done by the end of twenty-six with this project. So it's going to move fast. There's a lot of preliminary work that's got to happen. Just over the last couple of weeks, we've signed contracts with our major vendors to get the work scheduled, to get the engineering work done, to have project oversight, to make sure that we develop good community relations, that we don't rush through this project and leave a mess. We want to be good community partners as we go through here. We want to make sure that communication is wide open with the local community. I do want to just acknowledge some of the folks that we'd be dealing with and seeing on a regular basis is we've got Brownstone Consulting who's here doing project oversight of the project. Just basically making sure everything is happening as it's supposed to, if there's any complaints that we can quickly get those resolved. Cop family, our engineering partner in the back, doing a lot of the initial engineering work in our manuals, things like that. And then Quanta and their Aspen Utility subsidiary, they're based out of Houston. They're going to be doing a lot of the construction work and also the some of the additional engineering that's going to be done. And then one of our other partners, L C R A, I think most of you can believe. So again, we're very excited to be here. You know, the fun part is doing a ceremony like today, not a hard part start. We want to make sure that we start off on the right foot with all local communities, the cities, the county. Make sure that we understand your concerns and then be addressed very quickly. And then develop a communication plan so everybody knows where we're going to be starting work, how quickly we'll be able to start turning certain areas. Obviously, our goal is not to do this work for a year and a half and then all of a sudden start turning communities. We want to turn on communities as soon as possible. So if there's any questions, again, my name is Pat McDonald. Also, I want to introduce Dusty, Dusty, where you at? Dusty right here is one of our local managers. He lives over in the Victoria area. You know, not too far drive, so he's going to be on site here quite a bit, helping oversee the project from our standpoint. My office is just a little bit further south from here, but Dust would be available on notice. And I think most of y'all that are in the community is our chief operating officer. With that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Barza, Navy Sam Keyward, real quick.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning to the community. It's certainly an honor and my pleasure to be here this morning. But about seventy-three years ago in nineteen fifty-two, there was a rural vision to start Valley Telephone Cooperative. And Valley Telephone Cooperative is a parent company of B T X One. Basically, B T X One is just the umbrella for Valley Telephone, B T X Communications, and B T X Investments. And with the spirit of our predecessors, those rural individuals, just like this rural community with the small townships. This, this is the fabric of which our country and our state is made of. And without, without this fabric, we will not continue to be who we have been, who we are, and who we want to continue to be. And in this rapidly changing, this evolution of telecommunications, we're very, very proud at B T X One. And I'm very proud of the board that we have. I'm very, very proud of our staff. And we have been working overtime to be sure that projects like this continue to advance and that rural America continues to stay abreast of the rest of the world. I was raised in a rural community. I have very deep, very deep connections to the Lissies, to the Pallas, to the Seculis, on and on. I'm very proud at this Lissy we were talking earlier. So the Lissies educated my children. And not only do we have that sense of family, but we have the sense of rural, very rural values. And we want our children to have the same opportunities in rural Texas, in rural America, that everybody else has, that everyone else's children has, whether they live in New York City or they live in Karnes City. Everybody should have the same opportunity. So that is our vision at B T X One. And we're, we're very happy to partner with this incredible community, particularly Count's County, Karnes County, that has maintained the values of when this community was founded back in eighteen fifty-four and before that. So again, it is our pleasure to, to be part of this effort. Thank you all.
Item, we need a motion to approve this, disapprove it.
Motion to approve, item number seven, that's present.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in the second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Carry. Item number eight, discuss approve disapprove presentation approval officially year twenty-four independent and independent audit by O'Connell Law and Associates. You can see, Bill.
I don't want to be offended if anybody wants to. But fifty-one day, I'll be brief. So I'm, I'm the independent operator for the county. Obviously, you hired it on your annual report. So you have that paper in front of you. Inside, tucked in is a one-page auto highlights file, which gives you some brief overview. But when we're testing fees, our goal is to give it a stamping approval to the third. Anybody outside of you who knows of a third party who's approved it and agreed their act. So we've done our due diligence and we've given you that opinion. While we're doing our work, if we come across anything that we think you should be doing better, we'll bring that to your attention. We did discuss with the judge and offered some ideas, but nothing that we think is important for the court to consider. So there are no findings in this report. That one-page auto highlight gave you a little bit of financial overview for last year. You can see in the general fund that your revenue was up. Costs were also up a little bit, not as much as you budgeted because there was some capital projects that didn't happen that are going to probably be happening this year. So you were able to add a little over a little bit to your reserves this last year, which got you up to sixty-two million in the general fund. On the road and bridge side, your revenues were down because of this E T F grant. You didn't have as many draws this last year. You also spent a little bit more on some projects, so you did reduce your road and bridge reserves, but there's still a very healthy balance in the road and bridge after the past year. On the bottom of that page of the rest of your fund balances, you can see the history for them. But those are really just by highlights. Happy to answer any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, well, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think what's the objection to get after, as it says, is that probably I can put rocket in the battle in a cone.
Right, but it decided for that project that lasts more than just one year.
Okay, any questions? Not some action items.
Motion to approve, item eight, that's presented.
Second. Yeah, we've got a motion in the second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Item number nine, acknowledge receipt of an admitted donation in the amount of fifteen hundred dollar for Park Electric Co-op. We mark the E L S, you do that expression of yes.
Teaching offering all, so every year reported with Farm County Cooperative by their first aid CPR education for their staff. And then moving that, returning that, they are commission fifteen or all of here to our apartments. So we appreciate the collaboration with local co-op. We have a lot of good family entrants that work there, so they're a good partner.
Thank you, thank God. Item number ten, discuss approve disapprove twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, six grant resolution for the truancy prevention program. We're posting human authorization department, drone.
Again, for every annual, we have to do any highway plan for a grant. A permit of permission, so if the, that the farmer or the for a truancy prevention grant. For about the past six years, we've reapply for this prevention grant. It's funded through the governor's office and funds to a tenant specialist who worked with our local school districts in the, in Carver, in Walton County. And provide oversight on tenant issues to hopefully improve who is the, she's in the school district. So if you wouldn't mind signing the resolution to allow us to go ahead and follow the deal with that grant.
Item ten, twenty-five, twenty-six, for truancy prevention program. The board is in plus the human operation. Motion in the second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Item number eleven, wait until, what did you want to just? Sign up here. Message it up, are you heard? Awesome. For a man to discuss approve disapprove adopting local procurement policies and procedures pertaining to G O O community development block grant mitigation that's C D V G dash E I T method of distribution program, infrastructure contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash one five dash T nine twenty-eight. Last meeting and we did the initial announcement on this. So this is just to approve the procurement policies and procedures.
Yes, sir. It's been done by March of nineteen, it's part of the grant, G O O grant. And so this is just affirming those policies as required and start with that.
Any questions? Those are the mail. These are policies that the county has adopted to this project. Is that, is that right or disaccepted? These will, these will be our ticket, your camera popping. Thank you. Yeah. That's correct.
There's one that we need to work with, the ones that we have right now. Night Purvis needing us to
I think it's just updates. I think it's just updates that the grant requires that you have in there. That doesn't supersede anything that you are already have in place or anything like that. For what?
Lessons. Who's the purchasing officer going to be? There's several parts in here where it talks about the mission of the constant purchasing office. Who's, who is establishing that office? Who's going to take that role?
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know if that's been outlined before with that. Usually the purchasing offices is, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm not sure if that would like the policy say.
The purchasing office and officer, who do you think are commonly brought up in here?
Those are just, those are just what the grant out, it's not specific to this, to being like, it's just terms of the grant. Like there's nobody assigned to that. There's not a specific person.
It would be the court. It could be the court. There are things in here like federal regulations require standards conduct must provide for disciplinary actions to be applied for violations of such standards by officers, employees, or agents of the grantee. Assets Karnes County shall impose penalties, sanctions, or other disciplinary actions to any employees, officers, or agents of Karnes County for violation of these. Do we have standards established? Do we need to establish some of these communities?
We are, that's what you're establishing. These are just general conditions. The court already probably has those things in place. These are just
For violation.
I'm pretty sure. If I had to guess, I think. That your violation is standard is going to result in what does that outline what this, that are, that I was. But that's a way with shuttle hand to convert it and stop.
Any more discussion? I believe all my questions will just be answered with, it's kind of a poll we have to be got.
I was all of us got as well. If there's any further questions, we'll stick out and publish that as well.
The purchasing agent is designated as Karnes County contracting officer. The contracting officer shall administer all procurement transactions accordingly. It is the duty of purchasing agent to properly procure all supplies, materials, equipment, and to contact for all repairs to the property account. If we haven't established somebody in that position.
When you do that, we need a lot of bid. You do that, we need to go on things when we passing the patent measures for.
Again, you correct in stating that it is the court and the court has been reporting that agreement.
There's not going to be specific to that. Always voted on by the court as an unit.
So the agent would be before.
Yes, as Judge said.
We've got a motion in the second on the table, all of the favor, signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Carry. To discuss this disapprove adopting local policy. These are pertaining to the G O O community development block grant mitigation, C D V G dash I T method of distribution program, infrastructure contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash one five dash D nine twenty-eight.
Yeah, I've got some time, okay. Do you have any questions, Bishop, maybe?
Only, only I have is, is so these, the financial policies are just for this, this
Federal language, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Bill? Sir, motion. A second. Got a motion in the second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Carry. Item number thirteen, thank you, God.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, Dallas, Card County, shares off this vertical profile in the report. Item number thirteen, Dallas County Sheriff's Office vertical profile report for year twenty twenty-four, Chair Baker speaking.
Submitted, last year's twenty twenty-four rate of flip fund report to the board for review, five hundred and fifty stops, one male, seven hundred and ninety-seven, you know. Again, the right man again, team page in Pacific Islanders, thirteen listed, like, ten or twelve listed, one, and four hundred and eighty-three, so that's enough.
Or, or, no, sure, item number fourteen, discuss last possible action, presentation of United Healthcare audit, and make recommendations to find out basis to carry here, do you think?
I dare the final audit for the United Healthcare, and you can see in my report, we originally got money from United, involved with the proper, they were supposed to, and they netted it out, where there was one premium due from the original money, that was added in December, what we take out a month ahead of time, so that was on the January dollar, we were involved with that in January, and then we had an employee that, they changed coverage, and fairness to the attorney's office, it is a lot to keep up with, when people add coverage, change coverage, and so on and so forth, so that employee was overfunded forty-three oh six, so, and I've been working with Justice Williams' office, all this to confirm all the numbers, so we do owe United to claim the slate, one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents, and make recommendation that, we just pay them off, and the Blue Cross, I've been keeping up with the Blue Cross, well, too, they're doing a phenomenal job, everything balances, and so forth, I created a worksheet when I started, make sure, changes and all that accounting, like, so they're, they're doing a good job over there.
Will you do that for correction?
I'll make the motion in a little bit, pass it down, it's an amount of one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents to United Healthcare.
Second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, if anybody opposed, carries, carries, carries. Item number fifteen, discuss last possible action, presentation of gift card audit, and make recommendations for any gift card, do you think?
All right, before going back to the previous item, debris seen money from United for whatever program, court voted to, we gave a hundred dollar gift card to employees at our point of appreciation luncheon in December, there, we still have four gift cards, that employees were not given, because they were not in attendance, one was Shelby, one was Metru Solis, one was Sammy Madosa from Rhode Island Bridge, and Mary Tam, Mary retired at end of November, and I'm not sure court gave direction, you had the attendance to pick up your gift card. Bottom line is, we have twenty-two gift cards remaining, those four we could disburse to those employees, or ask for, y'all choose to do that. So another item on my gift card audit, and brought this up before, before, it was a fringe, it is a fringe benefit, and it should have been on the employee thirty-two, but it was not, ended the year. Do you need to decide what to do with these gift cards, we can disburse to the four that were not in attendance, and then the rest, whatever, you know, the funds. I talked to them all, our outside already, so we can purchase items for the appreciation luncheon, publicly, you know, give directly to employees.
I think that we should give these four remaining employees their gift cards, I don't know, I think you signed up on, but, I mean, obviously, they were employees at the time, they should get their gift, right?
Agreed.
The remaining money is from United for overpayment on the last item that we just agreed to pay, so I think we should use this money to pay for this bill we have to United, and then anything left over, we could use for employee, employees benefits, or employee appreciation, my opinion.
Great idea.
Yes. Because the, because these are gift cards, they may not, I was talking to Tom about this yesterday, it may not be easy to pay the bill directly with the gift cards, so we may have to redeem them for the cash value, and so, unless there's any other discussion, I would make a motion to get the four employees that have not received their gift cards, their gift cards, redeem these gift cards for their cash value, use that fund, those funds to pay this bill to United Healthcare, and deposit the rest to be used for employee appreciation.
Got that, Ms. Vinnie? All right, we've got motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, if anybody opposed to that. Item number sixteen, discuss approve, disapprove, A Alert Roof, we go over the bid that is submitted for the roof overlay on two-ten West Calvert, Carson Detective seven-eight-one-one-eight, Renee called me this morning, she got a little, might have come up, is Mark, Mark, I mean. Any money for Baker?
Judge, I have several questions and concerns about this, and I wouldn't want to move forward without being able to ask those questions. One particular is just that, this vote was for one hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollar, and it was only valid for fourteen days, Renee advised me this morning that the vote had increased, but I don't know what that amount is, we did not, not even.
I think Commissioner Lindsey, you were working on it, Renee, do you have any update on it?
No, just that they were the only one that made a bit of sense, kind of, not sustainable. We can vote on, maybe this, still, I think.
Yeah, we've gotten, okay, we'll take this, and let's do, check the agenda, show. All right, item number seventeen is our consistent agenda, we've got reports from JP Precincts one, we've got our district clerk, our IT. Does anyone have a motion approved, similar question? We've got a motion in a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, if anybody opposed, carries, we need to act on, we need to. Item number thirteen, update to our bill here, with the setup.
I received a report about fracking, dealt with only the one system, so the wind parent picked it up, and hold up, many waste facility, I have worked with several members of Rhode Island Bridge to update our database in county roads around Precinct one and Precinct four boundary line. I met with county attorney John Banks from Kirby Brandon, he gave you background of thirty new properties that the county has tried itself, could not do the proper title, he's been working to resolve this issue so we can sell those properties. A resident called me with concerns about how the water was running off County Road one-seventy-five and into FM six-twenty-six, I spoke with tech staff, they need, we need to take it back to County Road, that are caught with a wooden bridge, and learn that we had to build the road up, because at the time it was the lowest point, and that's just where all the water was running. We are hoping to make an agreement with tech staff, so they will allow us to work in there regularly, looking to resolve that concern. I received a complaint about specific, a specific company of speeding on County Road one-eighty-three, so I called that company's district manager and asked him to resolve that problem. Jimmy has been working with creative qualities for county technology and phone use, I reviewed his draft and gave him my feedback. I spent time in the county clerk's office researching county roads that I believed should be abandoned, along with familiarizing myself with how the unit system was established. Another resident called me about the poor condition of the intersection at Flat Point Road, and asked the dealer, Street Kennedy, reached out to tech staff, and they advised they have a contractor schedule to repair that, they're going to fix the tunnels and widen the intersection, and hopefully they'll start in a few weeks. I reviewed the agenda packet and bills, with items that we want the departments to get clarification with words they just voted. I had a constituent call me in practice looking to help, looking for help, of some personal legal issues he's dealing with. I got in contact with Community Real, to get him some help with mental health. I only bring this up because I often get asked what commissioners do, and commissioners for, or the commissioners, we do not have any judicial authority, we're here to help in any way we can, but those are things that we don't have the authority to help anyone with, but if you are experiencing mental health practice, the, the phone number for the practice center is one eight hundred five four three five seven five zero. You can call or text to speak to someone who can listen, offer feedback, suggest resources, and provide comfort, in situations dire, a person on the other end of the phone may also be able to contact local services for immediate help. If you like bingo today at one o'clock, will be the seniors citizen activity day at Carnes City Columbus Building. If you have property in West Carnes County, CPS Energy is rebuilding one of their existing transmission lines, and we'll have an open house meeting tomorrow night from five to seven at the B County Expo Center, at the Metro City Pride, in my office if you are interested. This Friday and Saturday, the Kennedy Chamber Commerce Association, the Twenty-First Annual Triple E Barbecue Cookoff, last I checked, they're still accepting teams, they have a five thousand dollar guarantee to catch payoff, and there are links to register on the Facebook page. Monday, March first, Carnes County will be sponsoring the Food Bank Distribution Carnes City E Showgrounds, the gates open at eight o'clock, and we always welcome volunteers to help serve our community. And lastly, on Monday, March tenth, the city of Kennedy will be hosting a Food Bank Distribution at the Sports Complex, starting at nine-thirty in the morning.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Precinct, treat him.
First thing I'd like to do is thank all the county authorities, and congratulate Carnes County, you, fourteen kids out of county made a sale of the San Antonio Stock Exchange , well, since, really. They're getting with road bridge every morning for daily briefings, County Road two-sixty-four, there's prep for paving and working on head walls, drainage and cement stabilizing, getting ready to, ready to pave, County Road one-ninety-eight is being road traded, County Road three-ninety-one is working on head wall and drains, County Road two-fifty-four CK Newbury started Monday morning, working on, it's a turnkey job to pave that, that load. County Road two-oh-seven, two-fifteen, and bridges, that's all, bottles, they've been suggested they be given, County Road two-eighteen, two-nineteen, road bridge are sipping the bad spots and credit for paving and, you know, the weather winds up a little, yeah. And last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, I attended the BG Youngman School for Continuing Education in Bryan, and it's very informative. Say he's might have made work of local outreach, practical programs, resources, and partnerships. Stayed in constant contact with Golden Bridge while we had the conferences, the reasons why they like sweet. Just, like, just, tell Sheldon, Duke, thank you for the work that he did on the program, contact helping to do, to, to. Say, God bless him.
Commissioner, it's us.
Good morning. Few items here, because there's too many, so this is the road, the bridge, that all the time of the case, I'll list a few. County Road three-oh-six, three-oh-seven, bladed, dressed up the road, County Road two-ninety-eight, boom, shredded it, County Road three-oh-two, three-oh-three, two-seventy-seven, six-seventy-one, fixed. Bottom, County Road two-forty-nine, there was two trees down, removed them, County Road three-fifty-seven, water bladed, dressed up the road surface, County Road three-and-four, paved the road, County Road two-forty-eight, mauled out that road, County Road two-ninety-eight, started blaming that one today. Thank you.
Thank you. So County Roads thirteen, one-seven, one-sixty-four, my track for crainage, County Road three-thirty-five, three-thirty-six, three-fourteen, one-thirty, are all waiting on weather. Need them, I also attended the BG Youngman Foundation, it was education out there, and to get out and network with some of the folks, other commissioners and judges out there. Went out to, got a call from a constituent concerning a future gap that may come out in the show area, I've been working with permits, and, and they submitted their permit, and out, and this was, just look at the site, there was actually work being done, so I noted my permits, and let them know, so they can go out there to address that, the permit's not on lease, they should not be doing any work out there. And of course, I think they're a little gray area there, that what's for, what's not, but I think that a permit guy is going to be, I'm just sure, is going to be taking care of that, of course. I also received another call from a constituent concerned in road and rummy, after doing some research on it, I found that it's, it does a form of county umbrella, and so that's something he said after. Thank you for the rain, and, and help us.
Thank you. All right, item number twenty, discuss slash acknowledge personnel change, all departments, we do have some new hire, we, our new county extension agent has started, I checked on her last week, Sheriff's Department, got a new admin assistant, a jailer, patrol deputy, EM, it's got a, it's a paramedic. General contractor, or reassignment in the SO, we have a resignation, running the general medical director, retirement from the civil patrol deputy, currently hiring in the Carnivals and Juvenile Probation Department, agenda specialist, behavioral specialist, case manager, HHSC admin, at the part-time position, prevention specialist, and the real facilitator, Sheriff's Department is looking for jailers and patrol deputies, and courthouse security, I did hire for the tax office, we have, county security, that tax office currently, we interviewing for a new position, the bill here, and Thursday, I think, so. Item number twenty-one, leaving the bills.
For the total bills for today are nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand ninety-four dollars and ten cents on the general fund, one hundred and ninety thousand seven sixty-three thirty-five, that we've taken items there, for one-time audit, bill discounted seven thousand dollars, again, off the bill, because I'm the commissioner, trying to do some of the work, and my office to alleviate the amount that the county has to pay, we bought voting, voting equipment, that's twenty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, we paid the architects with the image building, forty-nine thousand one sixty-eight-eight, road bridge from the two funds, and I want to acknowledge Homer, Commissioner Rosales, and I've got Commissioner Missy, we want to keep the things going in, because that is the crux of the county, total bills is seven hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred twenty-four fifty-four.
We have price increase beginning of the calendar year. We had a couple of those on the trade, well, two minutes upon vision, those by.
Thank you, motion in a second, all those in favor, right hand, if anybody opposed, carries. Item number twenty-two, in our left venture report, we'll meet on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, at nine o'clock in the morning, in the Farm County purpose room, right here, three-ten, West Calvert, sweep, fifty, Carne City, Texas, seven-eight, eight, item number twenty-three.